Welcome to Nottingham. This is to the Board of Selectmen's meeting of July 15, 2024. And we will start the meeting off with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which sustains, one nation, under our, invisible, liberty, and justice for all.
All right. Did everybody get a chance to go over the payroll manifest? Any questions on it?
All look good to me.
I just seem to cut my eye, so. Looking for an approval for those?
Make a motion to approve the accounts payable for 7:15 and payroll for 7:16.
Oh, second.
We have a motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye, Steve Welch.
Aye, John Decker.
Aye, John Warren.
Aye, Matt Schreul.
Let's still go back to the roll call. Okay. Minutes, if I read over the minutes from 7:01 with any questions or corrections?
It was not there, but it was.
I had one minor correction. It was like, probably sitting on my desk yet. Hang on a second. Where is it?
There you go. Probably this one.
Yeah, I don't want this. Now, this was the ones we already approved. Those are approved.
Um, yeah. Line 181.
Oh, oh, was it that end? There was a random N.
No, on line 181, it just, it said that Mr. Decker moved, seconded by Mr. Debrio, to unseal the non-public minutes, but then later on, it says the non-public meeting minutes will remain sealed.
March 20th versus March 23rd.
Those are two different dates.
Okay. There we go.
Yep, so.
I wasn't here, so that's, I was read it, and I'm like, wait, it says unsealed there, not there. Okay.
All right, it may have gotten fixed, because it was in the, it was like on the first, there was some random N in the, in the first line, not the first line, but in some line, it just had an N in there. So maybe it got fixed after it was sent. I don't see it.
I can do a search, and if it's in there, then I can remove it.
Yep.
All right, so that's, yeah, two different dates, so I don't have any, I wasn't there.
Make a motion to approve the public minutes of 7:01 and the non-public of 7:01.
Motion in a second? You seconded, right?
Yes, I was seconding it, and you spoke up. I was second.
All three of us, so I figured it was gonna be one way or the other. Okay, good. Roll call.
Aye, Steve Welch.
Aye, John Decker.
Aye, John Warren. And it's approved for July 1st.
Matt Schreul abstaining.
Sorry. Maybe I'm just, just. Figuring these things were gonna happen anyways, but okay.
Have to say it.
Yes, I know you do. It's mine, just. Okay. Reports from assigned boards and committees. We just had a CIP meeting?
Yes, we did.
Our first one, right?
First one of the year.
You still looking for a planning board rep? Because I didn't see one.
We still need a planning board rep.
We talked about that at the meeting.
That's good. Was there any interest? No. Take that as a no.
I'm not doing to appoint somebody, but that's.
Can I just stop you? One thing, there are two non-public meeting minutes for July 1st. You're approving one, but there are two sessions, and there are two sets of minutes.
There was, we did one beginning.
Right, one at the, beginning one at the end.
Do you want to do two votes on that?
They're technically two separate records.
Okay.
I still abstain.
Which one did we approve? Which one?
So we approved the, uh, the first section of the meeting session.
And the second, now, who wants to make a motion to approve the second session?
Make a motion to approve the second.
All right, I'll, I'll do a little second, the second.
Second's a good one, so.
There you go.
Aye, Steve Welch.
Aye, John Decker.
Aye, John Warren.
Matt Schreul abstaining. Okay, sorry.
So going back to our CIP?
Yep, CIP. Yep, so we had our first meeting. We still need a planning board rep. We discussed sending out the requests to department heads. We looked at the stuff that basically was approved in 2024 and looked at the stuff that wasn't approved and, you know, talked about some of the stuff would have to be moved out. We will have our next meeting, just.
August 19th at 5:00 PM.
Yep, it's right there. August 19th at 5:00 PM, thank you.
You're welcome.
Anything else I missed on that? I think that probably covers it.
No, it was a kickstart, a kickoff meeting.
A planning board meeting was on last Wednesday. We had a conceptual for a subdivision, kind of off Dolph Dam Road. And then we also had a resident town looking to change their lot lines for their lot to make one bigger and one smaller. And there was a lot of discussion on the fact of that the small lot's gonna be a non-conforming lot. So that, at the end of the meeting, was basically tabled until the homeowner or resident can get further consultation on what they could be doing. And it was a relatively quick meeting, because we were out of there before nine o'clock, so I was.
Wow.
Yeah, for a planning board.
And where was this?
Where was what?
Property that was, um, looking to subdivide?
Uh, jeez, I know the name of the road, now I just forgot it.
That's okay.
Right there.
Frances. Right over there. Perfect. What does it matter?
Hall. Hall, there you go, Hall's Way, Hall's Way. I never traveled the road, except for that one time to go look at, so, but there you go.
Take that shortcut?
No. Budget, we heard that was part of the CIP, we talked about the end. We'll be going into that later. The budget, well, not budget, we got our reports and things, but that's not what I'm talking about. Sorry, guys, a lot on my mind going through. Any from Highway Rec or, uh, Rec, we also have, since Tim's not here, the Constance Series, I believe, starts tomorrow night? Last week?
Last week.
Last week? Okay. And then tomorrow night?
Another one tomorrow night.
Yep, there's four this year, right?
That is correct.
So, if you guys want to get out, I know it's gonna be a little hot out there, but it is good. Anybody else have anything on boards or committees? Okay. We're gonna move on to the Town Administrators' report.
Our new police officer, Seth Cornell, starts with the department tomorrow, so welcome him aboard. The new cruiser has arrived at Gaponi. It actually showed up today, so the trade cruiser will need to be stripped. The new cruiser will be outfitted at Ospey Mountain Electronics and. I'm sorry, what? The cruiser, the police cruiser. So it's still gonna be a couple of weeks before it's put into service, because once it gets all of its gadgets and equipment, then it'll have to be decalced, the graphics put on it, and then it'll be ready, so it'll be a couple of weeks still, but it's at least here in New Hampshire. Just a few reminders to all, the town beach is for residents only with their invited guests. Obviously, the resident should be present with any out-of-town visitors. The gate to the beach access trail closes at 7:00 PM sharp. There are signs on the gate on the town's website. There were several people that were locked in over the weekend after the gate got closed at 7:00 PM, so that requires the police department to go down, open up the gate, let the people out. It was noted that most of the people that were locked in were non-residents. So we're just trying to get that word out there. Obviously, it's, it's not residents, we're getting the word out to residents, it's not getting out to the non-residents that are, that are using it.
So they have vehicles in there?
Correct. I believe what may have been happening in the past is people were going down and making sure that the beach was clear. Obviously, we're utilizing who we can to get the beach, the trail access gate opened and closed at 9:00 AM and 7:00 PM, so, you know, that, that extra effort isn't being made, but just a reminder.
There are four signs that are very large, and you go down there, listing all the rules and everything. There's signs on the gate that says the time that they close. Do I feel any compassion for them getting locked in? No. Do your own. They gotta wait till somebody comes to unlock them.
Well, they're trespassing.
So, I have seen other. To all our residents that are using the beach, please be out of the gated area by 7:00 o'clock. Exactly. There you go. People love that, so. All right.
Okay.
Before we digress, let's keep going on, please.
I've reached out to the New Hampshire Dam Bureau, and we've been in communication over the past couple of months. They will be reinstalling no trespassing signs at Drouves and Dolph Dams this week. They are not able to block off access otherwise, because they need to be able to get in and maintain them, so there's not gonna be any gates that are put up. But another reminder that there should be no fishing from either of the dams. It's obviously a safety precaution, and we don't want anybody to get hurt. So, no, no fishing from the dam where it will be clearly marked, no trespassing, only along the shore. And another reminder is that there's no fishing permitted in the swimming area at the town beach, so. There, there is room there for fishing. Yes. Correct. I'm, I'm only talking about the town beach specifically. No, no fishing at the, in the swimming area. And no crossing the dam to fish from the dam, you can, you can fish from the shore or from the waterline or however you want to access. It's not really a shore there.
Where do we stand on the swim marks?
The swim markers were due to arrive today, did not check with Courtney before the end of day. But our window of delivery was between the 2nd and 15th of July, and as I stated, they were coming from China and got lost somewhere in transit. Yes.
When they're, when they're here, can you have Courtney let us know?
Yes.
So that if she needs assistance, there's people that we know that can assist in putting those in.
Okay, we'll do, thank you.
I, I would be happy to assist with that.
I had put out there that I was looking for, I met with the supervisors of the checklist, the town and deputy town clerk today, the town moderator, and one of the suggestions that was made is maybe, as you've appointed liaisons to different boards and committees, having a liaison to the elections, just so they can be the point of contact to circulate information, obviously with a lot of very important elections coming up this fall. We need to make sure that the select board is aware of changes and, and all of that. So, Tim Debrio did email me before this meeting, and he would be willing to serve in that capacity if you were willing to, if you're interested in having a select board liaison to the election, we'll call it the election committee, which is pretty much the people that I just named.
Alan, did you say you'd be helping for the deputy town clerk?
No. We're, we're looking for a select board liaison to the, we'll call it the election committee. So would you be in favor of Tim being the central source of the information to disseminate any of that to you as a group?
Anybody else wanna do it? I could fill in if you can't make it, so. Between the twelve of us, we'll make it happen. If that's agreeable.
Well, it probably wouldn't be good for me to be on it.
It probably would not. I would not suggest that.
Well, if he gives us any misinformation, you can correct him.
There you go.
So, leading off of that, the supervisor of the checklist, the town clerk, deputy town clerk, moderator, and I met this afternoon to discuss the options for the new ballot counting machine. The consensus of the group is to offer a commitment to LHS, which is awaiting its final approval from the state for their voting machine. There's the, the two options, one of them's Voting Works, and this one is actually going to be an easier transition, because it's very similar to our existing ballot counting machine. So, that is the general consensus of the group. There are, have a grants avail, grant funds available that can be either used toward purchasing the new ballot counting machine or toward the e-poll books. $3,500 is available, we just need to let them know which way we'd like. $7,500 was approved for the purchase of a new ballot counting machine in Warren article this year, so, because that funding is already set aside, then it would be great to use the grant funds for those e-polling books. So, that's what they're discussing now and trying to figure out, you know, the cost for, what they're looking for is five, and then there's an annual maintenance.
What is an e-poll book?
It's going, so take your checklist, it's going to digitize it, and it's going to enable them to register new voters and.
Okay.
No, it won't.
No?
No.
Okay.
It won't do that part.
Okay. Well, we'll, we'll let the supervisors explain that when we get to the point of purchase.
But it's something to benefit.
It will, but it still has to be done manually.
It does. But it allows us the process to be started.
Yeah.
Right? To notify the ballot clerk that a new voter has been registered.
It doubles the work of the supervisors.
Wait, so why, if, what's the, I guess my question now is, what's the benefit of spending $3,500? It's gonna make their job even harder.
It's actually gonna be more than that, because they're, I think they're $1,300 apiece, and we would be needing five of them. The moderator would have one, the town clerk would have one, the supervisors would have one, and the ballot clerk.
And the maintenance is, their annual fees are pretty high for them.
Yeah, it's $300 per pad.
Do we need these? No.
It help.
No, no, I mean, I mean.
We're, we're asking you to go.
Make them all work.
We're not ready for that discussion, so I think when we get there, we'll have the moderator and the supervisors come in and help sell it. I just, I don't have, everything that I have for information, I learned today, so I'm not well-versed to be able to speak of it, but I just wanted to bring it up as a topic.
Good questions, Joe.
In your action item folder, I'm looking for you to make a motion, there's a letter of support in there, that Dallas Huggins from the Conservation Commission was nice enough to draft up for you, and it's related to the turtle-friendly culvert on Reservation Road that they're applying for a grant for. So that's in your folder, and if you are in support of.
Can you spend some time with that? Because it seems like it got more expensive.
It's the, well, I think the, you think it's more expensive? Because the town's commitment.
From what I was reading, when I was going over the stuff, it sounded like we need to spend more money or whatever, but they're gonna do more funding. I, I don't know, I, I was a little.
No, I believe what they're trying to do is they're going, that, the $2,060 that the select board committed to financial funding, because the rest of it is in-kind donation that would be coming from donated engineering services and the highway department installing, the, the financial contribution from the town, I think they're going to seek private donations to cover that, so there will be no burden on the town. That, that's my understanding of it.
Okay, because when I was reading it, and I was like, is this, to me, it sounded like it was gonna cost it more than, what's that?
It did read awkward.
Yeah.
Now, that was from Dallas's email. I did have an in-person conversation with Susan Mooney shortly after she came in to do the presentation, and she was asking me if the town could accept donations for that, and I said, yes, absolutely, as long as it's within, as long as it's less than $10,000, it wouldn't require a public hearing, then obviously the donation should come in with an intended purpose, so we know where to earmark it for.
All right, I just wanted to make sure that we're not overcommitting to something that.
We already put a number on it.
Right, we already put a number on it, and I just wanted to make sure that stuff didn't get, you know, confused.
So, in a letter that $2,100 was appropriated for the amount for cash donations, so. They'll be working on fundraising for the cash donation portion. Can there be donations made to the town for the specific purpose? I guess I didn't read it that way, that there would be addition, that would be an addition to the appropriation.
I mean, it might be that, like you said, Steve, it seemed a little awkward.
Well, there's no doubt, we can't be raising more money for this project than you are on default budget, and there's a lot of other places we could use that money. Probably have sympathy for the turtles, but. Pretty kind of money.
Right, I mean, if, if, whatever we can get from private donations.
Fantastic.
Is just exceptional.
Gonna be happier.
Well, that's really how it's gonna, it's gonna have to unfold that way, so.
And this is all going to be pending grant approval, which we won't know until November, but their application deadline is July 18th.
It sounds like, yeah, again, 2,100 was appropriated for the cash donation. Should we be selected, I will be working on fundraising for the cash donation portion.
All right, and.
Can there be donations made for that purpose? So it sounds like 2,100 is all the physical money that would come from us, but it sounds like they have plans to cover that.
Okay, that's, that's great. I just, when I was reading it, it just kind of.
But I, I mean, we are putting in-kind contribution, I think we're putting a lot of the labor and stuff like that, that will.
Yeah.
So did you all have a chance to read the letter that was written?
Even that's gonna be difficult to get into this default budget.
Which part? Well, the.
I mean, the guides are here.
Because we gotta pay them.
Right, but they're working something.
I know, I know. Just saying something else is gonna fall by the wayside, because we're, we're here and we're not over here.
So, all right. So you need a motion to?
Do you have any changes, sir?
No, I guess not.
Make a motion to sign a letter in support?
We already made that motion last meeting, didn't we?
Yeah, throw it to sign of formality.
Okay, sign of formality, then. Okay, moving on to correspondence, from the Board of Selectmen Public Comment email, there was an email from Nick, Nick Gotheier dated July 3rd regarding the town beach. I provided a response. If you have additional response that you'd like to add to it, now it's kind of a moot point, because the beach has been reopened. Morag Walsh email on July 8th, that came through your email as a contact us, she was just looking to receive an additional facility sticker to get her into the recycling center, so I responded to that one as well. New Hampshire D E S Solid Waste Management Bureau on July 10th, that was an email that we got preliminary to a certified letter, and it's regarding the Nottingham Recycling Center. Letter deficiency for the annual filing that was due in March, I was able to pull together the annual report that was filed, and I've resent it, so hopefully that is done and over with. Other general mail and correspondence that has been received either by myself or the town office that I wanted to make you aware of, I did respond to Skip Severn's email from June 15th requesting to unseal and make public, non-public session minutes. Those were dealt with in the July 1st meeting, of which the March 23rd meetings were, March 23rd, 2023, meeting minutes were unsealed and therefore are now available to the public. Denise Blaha emailed on July 9th, she's a trustee of the trust fund, and you may recall last year, there was the Arthur Fernal Trust that was in the custody of the trustees of the trust fund, and it was determined to be a discriminatory trust fund held. So the trustees wanted to dissolve it and disperse the monies to appropriate charities that were in line with its intended purpose. So it required us to go through the court and get that fund dissolved, which that's all been taken care of now, so that email is just acknowledging that everything has been finalized, and they'll be dispersing the funds. David Smith from New Hampshire DOT, and Sandy Dow was also in some correspondence regarding the 10-year plan to update the intersection of US Route 4, New Hampshire 152 and Cooper Hill Road. Myself, Chief Curry, Chief Woodman, and Highway Director Steve Rollins met with two members from New Hampshire DOT, I think it was the Wednesday following the last meeting, just to review what their proposals were, and obviously, they're, they're looking to relocate the intersection from the Northwood side to Nottingham. They're still in the very preliminary stages, they're working off a design from 10-plus years ago, so that needs to be updated. As they progress further on the project, then they'll be holding the public, or the informational sessions with you as the Board of Selectmen, and then followed by the public, but just to kind of get initial feedback from both the town of Northwood and Nottingham, that's what this, this initial meeting was, and to get the contacts out there. So, there will be more coming down the pike on that very soon, probably within, I think it was within the next three years, that we'll start to see some intersection improvements.
So is there buying a lot of property in this one?
They have already done that. They procured the properties that they needed to do all of this on the first round, that it went through the redesign phase, and at that point, it was talking about signalizing it. Now the discussion is moving more towards a roundabout. It'll be further down the road.
It's gonna be further down than what they originally planned?
Further, closer to Lee.
Wait, really?
Yes. The intersection itself will be moving.
So they're gonna move it again, as a plan, their new plan?
So essentially, where it comes out onto Route 4 now, that will be kind.
Right, so it's supposed to move closer to Lee?
Yeah.
But then they're gonna move it further than that?
No, 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 no.
Oh, okay.
They're just talking around about.
Oh, okay, sorry.
Right, rather than, rather than signalizing that intersection, they're talking about putting a roundabout.
I think she went down the road, meaning it's, it's a ways, like, in time-wise, like, three years, two, right?
Three years. Three years, we could start seeing.
See what happens in three years.
I don't know, the roundabouts are, like, popular right now.
And then we'll take them back out again, and we'll put them back in.
Let me realize how many accidents they actually brought.
Moving forward, Dallas Huggins email, we just talked about that for the Reservation Road Culvert, and then Corey Clark's email was regarding the no trespass sign at Nottingham Dams, being Dolphson Drouves. And that is all I have for my Town Administrators' report. I did keep copies of all the correspondence with my report, if you need to reference back to it.
Thank you very much, Ellen. So we're gonna go a little out of order right now, due to the fact that it's 7:00, and we're gonna open our public hearing for the land use board fees. This came in front of the planning board about updating the fees that we charge for construction, subsequent land reviews, and if there isn't one.
And I would just like to note that most of these fees were already adopted in last October, so it's only the highlighted section that's new to this fee proposal. Would anybody like a copy in the audience? Of course.
We've already talked about this, so it's just a matter of.
No, the new fees are, they're adding 100 or a $300 administrative mailing fee. This is to assist with the budgeting process. What's ending up happening is the planning board is eating some of the costs for additional mailings. John, you can probably speak to this, this has been discussed at the planning board, right?
So one of the things that happens with the planning board is subdivision plan comes in, it's called 10 lots or whatever, but then that developer could come in front of the board five times, and there's five changes, so we keep getting the whole big pamphlet. So every time you mail out a pamphlet, it's $10. Now, there's a certain fee that covers the first part of it, but then during the time going on, the town started paying for all the cost of the, of the mailings. You've got seven board members, and again, we're counting pennies here, but it's, you know, you think it's $70 every time, and then if there's four, you know, over the course of the year, it could be up to over $1,000-some dollars or, or more.
Why don't you change that, that they're coming in to pick them up?
They are.
We are, but, you know, this will help so we can go back to the way that we had it before on those bigger plans.
Okay.
So we're trying to, you know, keep everybody happy in a certain way. And it's not uncommon to have, you know, fees like this that are put on for these, just because, again, the amount of information that's provided and the amount of information that's changing, and the fact that their plans could be there, you know, they're gonna give us X amount of days beforehand to get it, but some people with their work schedules and that, it's just tough to get here, so it's easier just to be mailed to the house, so. But that was just one of the reasons why, you know, then if you're looking around the other fees in there, we actually used Litchfield, New Hampshire, as one of the things that we were looking at what their fees are, and then Ed did a nice job, looked at some other towns. So the new adjustments in these fees that you see here are, are more to get us in line with what's going on around us in neighboring towns. We're not by any sort of means, you know, exceeding. We're not by any sort of means, you know, exceeding the limit or making it, you know...
Just bringing them in line.
Again, yeah, and making sure that we're charging enough like we should be charging for, for the new subdivisions, new lots, you know, houses aren't getting cheaper. So, you know, again, we want to make sure that the town is adequately paid for the services that are provided from Alana, from, you know, the building department. And so it's just a way of getting it in line. So on this one here, if you notice, there isn't too many changes on it. So it's not like a huge discussion, but it was just some necessary changes that needed to be made.
Yes.
The yellow changes, yeah, and it's only, you see all the other ones you already did before. We already updated those last year, so this new ones are just some other updates that we saw that we noticed, and that's why... So like the administration mailing fees, like that wasn't there before. So like, right, so now we have different categories for minor subdivisions, large subdivisions. So if it's a minor subdivision, which could be just like a three-lot subdivision, you know, there's going to be a $100 fee that's going to be applied to that. You know, if it's a major subdivision, well, there's a $300 fee that's going to be applied to that. Because obviously, we expect more plans, we expect more things, so we're obviously going to charge more for the larger subdivisions. And then, you know, planning consulting service to fees deposit. You know, there's another thing that's been added on there. Because like a lot of the stuff that we do here, when it comes to the planning board, we use S...
SRPC.
SRPC, sorry. And they, they have their consulting services that they're providing for the town. But you know, we have to pay for those too, so, you know, we rely on them because I mean, they're the experts, you know. The planning board's a bunch of volunteers with a lot of experience, you know, of different things. But, you know, it is nice when you're talking about a 25-lot subdivision to have somebody that's been through 100 of them or two, you know, that, that can help, you know, explain it to the board, explain what the applicant's telling the board. So that's where that consulting fee comes in, which we found necessary. Yeah, well, this is, I mean, we, I mean, once we see the initial plans for like a subdivision, I mean, we kind of get the gist of what's going on. But that's where that consulting fee comes in, where you have to talk about the, they're going to talk about slopes. You know, how much pitch you got to have on the road, or this, or culvert things, and drainage, and this is where these guys will know a lot more than...
But this doesn't cover building...
No, 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 no. That's a whole different...
Yeah, so this would just be the land...
That's a whole nother fee schedule.
Do you want a copy of it? You sure?
Yeah, again, this... No, the, we already adjusted again all these fees before. So this right here is just, we have to legally do this to discuss these two changes we made. You know, so this is why we're having an open... I mean, it's not going to change the world really for anybody, you know, except for the person doing the subdivision. And even then, it's, it's not a lot of money, but it's important for the town to make sure that we're getting funded for the services that we're providing, and make sure the applicant that's getting it is paying the town for those services, so that it's not put on the burden of the residents, so. And again, there are not huge money differences, but, you know, in this day and age, we want to make sure we keep everything... I don't know what you said.
This bottom line, John. Engineering.
Next to the bottom.
At the time of acceptance, there will be engineering and legal fees if applicable. So I think what happens is the $500 that's given at the time of application is used towards whatever those fees may be if it applies. No, actually, right now, if they have to consult with legal or engineering, the cost is borne on the applicant, but this, this outlines it in the fee schedule, so the applicant knows about it ahead of time.
So they can't say we're putting something on them that's not there, you know? Because they'll get a copy of this thing right here that says all these, so. We don't want to play the "I didn't know about that" game, so.
Just quickly, the, if it were to be approval, so is the applicant responsible for recording?
Correct. They have to pay the recording fees and the L chip fee. It's like a $25 fee that goes with the recording of the document. We...
Do they have to, are they delivering the document?
Yes, we can. It's just not something that we're set up, I mean, it's a matter of paying mileage to somebody to do it, so...
But we don't, again, that's, again, the, the cost factor was there, so we don't...
Okay, I was just making sure it's not something like, someone to be like, well, we already got everything kind of like, they would, it's in their interest to get it recorded.
Oh, yeah, they have to.
It has to be.
Yeah. Does anybody in the public have any questions? Yeah. Oh, yeah, we haven't got to, we'll get, that's later on, right.
I'm going to close the, I'm going to close the public hearing on this notice. The board have any more questions?
Nope. We just have to make a motion to approve them.
Yep.
Make a motion to approve the new land use fees as highlighted in yellow on this one.
A second there.
We have a motion in a second. Roll call.
Hi, Steve Walsh.
Hi, John Dagger.
Hi, John Moran.
Hi, Metrill.
Well, there you go. Now we're going to go back to our regular schedule.
Yep.
We got one thing on the assessing line. This is an intent to cut. Anybody want to make a motion on that one?
Make a motion to approve the intent to cut Wood of Timber on map 19, lot 1-1.
Second.
Motion in a second, roll call.
Hi, Steve Walsh.
Hi, John Dagger.
Hi, John Moran.
Hi, Metrill.
All right. General business, we got the second quarter status review.
Near package, you have both an expenditure report and the revenues. I have not had a chance to review the revenues because I just received them from Betsy at about 2:00 this afternoon, and so I honestly haven't laid eyes on them yet, but to compare to where we were on the estimates. As far as the expenditure report, I went through this with the department heads in a meeting last Tuesday. There are still some light items that need to be shifted around between departments. There was question about fuel consumption for the fire department. We think that most of that cost might still be enveloped in the highway department, so there is quite a bit of cleanup that needs to take place, or I think is in the process of being cleaned up in this document itself. I'm looking for a detailed budget report, so we can just make sure that things like parts are, they get expensed to one department and then reallocated to others. So it's housekeeping generally. There was also some question from the recreation department expenditures that maybe should be hitting the operating budget that may somewhere be floating out, maybe a rec revolving fund, which is separate of this. So again, you know, that's the purpose of us holding these meetings on a regular basis is so that we can identify issues before we get to the budget committee and say, oh, no, that, that figure's incorrect, or... So this, this is very much a work in progress. For the most part, most budgets are in somewhat good shape. You'll know that on, at the end of quarter one, I think the highway department was already at 46% remaining. He's done a pretty good job at tightening things up. We're down to 33.88% remaining at the close of the second quarter, so that's reflective of, you know, pretty much shutting down any subcontracted equipment rentals and just doing the best that they can with the brush removal and grading, now that the grader's back up and running. We do have some maintenance, maintenance items that are going to be coming forward. We had two trucks that went down, I think I reported, two meetings ago, that we're still waiting on repair bills for those. But obviously, you know, we're, we're hoping for a very mild winter so that we don't end up in a significant deficit in this one budget that could be impacting our bottom line. But as far as the rest of them are concerned, I don't note any concerns. Everybody else seems to be in very good shape, the police department including, just because they're understaffed, so.
Recycling building maintenance took a pretty...
The recycling building maintenance, so that is, we're, we're seeing an income on the other side from the insurance claim that's not posted. So this is one of those things where the expense for the well repair got tagged, but we had money that came back from the insurance claim to offset it, so.
So we'll see that adjustment next quarter.
Correct.
Do we see, we won't see it on this, we'll see it on the...
Technically, it should be removed.
It's still an expense, we still pay for it.
It's still an expense, there'll just be an offsetting revenue that we see on the other side of it.
Right.
Like this, the police department special dirty, special duty?
Yep.
Right, that's a $6,300 bill, but they probably got charged to the company that we did the special service for.
Correct. And that's why it's notated as an O/ S revenue, an offsetting revenue, so that you can know to look to the revenues to see what we've actually received for special duty.
Yeah.
So, and it was little things like that, that we discussed at the department head meeting, was what line items within the chart of accounts that we can clean up and help clarify so that there isn't as much confusion when it comes to the budget committee. Say, I mean, something down to like the pistol permits line. I mean, that revenue gets expended. So the special, the special detail line item, that's actually not something that they budget for. Obviously, we get the revenue in to cover the expenditure, so that's actually going to become part of a separate fund because it's not part of the technical operating budget.
And all the building maintenance is a little over expended, but...
So with the building maintenance, yes, it is all expended. It had to go somewhere eventually. What we need to do, once I get that detail report, is I want to capture everything that's been done so far and then put forward a request to you to reimburse it from the expendable trust fund. But you haven't done any approvals as of yet for that because we still have a lot of things that are coming in.
So like, looking through some of this stuff, like the zoning board postage, that one was supposed to be covered by the zoning board, right? So it doesn't list it as an offsetting revenue in there, but that is like way over. Couple hundred dollars over, right, but still...
Because we zeroed the line item because the applicant is supposed to pay the fees. So that's where it got confusing, because you have to raise the money to...
Right.
Expend it.
Right.
But we're not actually raising it, we're just offsetting it with the applicant fee that comes in.
Yeah, all the posted.
Right.
Yeah, no, they're all kind of messed up. And the only other thing I saw looking through all this was a lot of office supplies. Everybody's got office supplies that seem to be over budget or whatever. Are we doubling up? Do we all have?
That's another department allocation that I have to verify. For the most part, I thought most of the office supplies were tagged to the town office or, you know, the executive board of selectmen, which is your first page, the 0140130. I can tell you firsthand that the town office has expended more than $84.79 in office supplies this year, so I think that they might be within other departments. They just need to be moved around.
Okay.
Yeah, it probably makes sense to just have it in one bucket and then...
It does, but like, I, I, when, when it came down to it several years ago, when people wanted to know exactly how much for transparency it costs to run a specific department, that's when, you know, we got into detail. But the bottom line is, is do we all take a ream of paper here or there from the town office supply? Yes, we don't charge the zoning board for that ream of paper.
So if you're just allocating a percentage, your, your transparency goes out the window anyway.
Right.
For the recycling center, the full-time salary, is that supposed to be in the part-time?
That needs to be moved to the part-time, correct. So I think it was probably one of the newer employees that was brought on just got tagged to the wrong account when the payroll expenses get posted.
Is the cemetery line, is that going to be, is that mostly for mowing?
Yes.
So a bunch of the stuff in rec we expect to be cleaned up, either into rec revolving?
And they're actually, from what Courtney was...
Or pulling out of rec revolving.
Pulling out of rec revolving and adding it into this operating budget. You know, office supplies is, is one of the things that Courtney had noted. And even their programs.
So that was hitting like rec revolving?
Mm-hmm. Or either that, or it's tagging some other department, but not hers. Because she has no expenditures for office supplies right now, nor does she have, she has $71 in program fees and, or program expenses, and she knows that there's more than that, so. It's just a matter of where did they get expended to. So like I said, Betsy is supposed to be pulling together a detailed status report, which will show us each invoice that was tagged to these individual line items, and then we can see if there's any discrepancies that need to be moved around. But this is why it's so important for the department heads to be signing off. This is one of the things that we implemented shortly after the budget season closed, is that the department heads need to lay eyes on their invoices and actually sign off and code them so we can make sure that it's not, you know, a clerical or data entry.
What's missing there if stuff's still getting...
Right, well...
Legally, it's important for us to look over it.
Right, oh, yeah, yeah.
When she sends us that list to say, does this make sense to me?
Right.
And if it doesn't, to call her and say...
I, I've sent Betsy a couple of emails and said, this seems weird to me, and she made a couple of corrections to think, so.
So I think that's it, it's just, it's the oversight on a regular basis. I know Chief Woodman is very thorough. I mean, she makes sure that she collects a budget report, and she's monitoring it every month, and that's what I've encouraged all department heads, is to make sure that they're reviewing it on a regular basis, because it's a lot easier to correct it, especially when it's fresh in your mind, rather than...
Right, and then...
Before months down the road.
The department has, should be better, more specific than we can be.
Oh, absolutely.
We definitely should be looking at it and having questions, but...
When do we start making line-to-line adjustments? Do we ever like make a line-to-line, or do we just, so, you know, for the fire department, full-time, we haven't, we're not as high, so we're using more part-time, so the part-time budgets?
It's really a matter of how you would like to see it. Do you want to see the expenditures as they are made? Or do you want to adjust it so that, I mean, like, we can explain that discrepancy, like, we didn't have full-time staff coming off those full-time salaries, and in turn, we filled those vacancies with part-time or per diem through a period of time. So that, when there's a question why the part-time or per diem line item is over, we can say, okay, because there's this excess in the full-time. I, I think for transparency and how things are, then it makes more sense to post it as it is.
So we leave it like that, but we just watch the total?
The bottom line.
You watch those two together.
Correct. You have to look at the big picture.
But we don't ever...
I, I, I wouldn't advise it. I don't, I don't think that it's a good idea to move stuff between line items to make it look like it's not overspent. I think if, you know, if a line item is overspent for a reason, then, you know, the question comes up, the department head explains why that is, and you move forward in budget or forecast appropriately for the future because of that.
And as things start to, you know, increase or show in the negative, I mean, we have a few things here or there, the, the bottom line might be fine, but when we go to budgeting, it'd be nice to know, do we really need to make this line item?
Right, and, and we're also up against the fact that we had to make changes to make the default budget bottom line work within this, so we know that some items are going to go over. I think you did the best you could with what you had to work with.
At the end of the day, whatever the bottom line or the budget was, we're not overspending it.
I agree. That's, I didn't know how we would want to track it. So if we're going to show the ones coming up as negative or overspent, that's fine.
I mean, it does make your eyes open, but when you look at part-time and full-time, and they kind of jive out, kind of make a little sense.
For that one line item, yeah, I mean, you know...
And there's others that... Now... Postage across the board.
For stuff that had, you know, like, we're doing work, like on the back or anything like that, and it had a warrant article specifically for...
Yep, the warrant articles are listed separately from the operating budget. And they're actually...
But they're not like, it's all kind of coming out of Allen's.
They're, no, it's not coming out of Allen's, it's all in the back. So they'll be, you'll see a current year budgeted, it's 01491610-002. It says line item 14 HVAC expendable trust fund, that's not it, but the $150,000 was raised towards the building maintenance fund. That's what I mean, like, these, the line items actually need to depict what they actually are. It's on page 17.
Yeah.
So that was the $150,000 that we raised from that expendable trust fund. Um, so that was the hundred and fifty thousand that we raised from that expendable trust fund. So technically, those funds need to be transferred over to the trust funds. They just were at their July eighth meeting. And then you as a board of selectmen need to vote to have money withdrawn from that expendable trust fund to cover the line item expenditures that are throughout the various town buildings, whether it's recycling or highway or here.
And we're getting into July. I just haven't seen any requests or.
No, we haven't. That's what I was saying earlier, is I need to pull together that detailed budget report, see what's been done for major maintenance or repair items, tally those up, and then have you vote on what's been expended to date to be withdrawn from that expendable trust fund, and then we'll offset these line items by that.
Kiruk.
We can either do it every time we have an expenditure, or we can group it just as long as it's within the same budget year.
Yeah, I mean.
I, I think probably quarterly would be more appropriate.
I was gonna say, you know, at max, monthly.
Yeah.
Is there anything glaring to you through this that you're like, you see something coming up that we need to?
Um, I have made a.
Put some extra emphasis on or watch or help get through something to make sure that we're not surprised? I mean.
I, I think my concern is pretty obvious, and that's going to be what the highway department is going to do this winter.
Yeah.
Um, if we have an early snow season, there's there's that end of it. So we either lengthen the routes for what we have for drivers to lessen some of the subcontracted plowing. I, I, I don't know what the answer is, other than to, to hope that it's unseasonal like it was this past winter.
Or like the summer.
But that is, that is the most concerning to me is the highway department.
Unfortunately, we got that late winter storm. We'll budget all the shreds. Yep. It did. Killed us. Yep. That was a big one.
Well. Come on, careful. We'll start making those adjustments that needed to be.
Well, I will, um, I know it'll be not typical from your normal review, but once this is updated, then I'll give you a clean copy for your next meeting. Uh, what we're working on for the, um, budget worksheet that will be reviewed by both yourself and the board of selectmen is we're changing the format. Um, it's been
We get budget ready?
Budget committee, yeah, sorry. The, well, the, well, you're gonna review the budget as well before it goes to the budget committee. Um, so the budget worksheet that's going to be used, Betsy and I are working on a new one. It's gonna be tabulated by department, and it's going to include not only your expenditures, but your revenues. So you're looking at both of them at the same time, rather than focusing strictly on the expenditures, where there might be an offsetting revenue that you also need to focus on. That will all be contained in one sheet for the departments, and then it'll all be tallied for all departments together, so.
Should be helpful.
We're hoping so. Um, I just know that it was, it was an extreme struggle working with an old worksheet where formulas were broken. Um, anything that we can do to help the budget process along this year is going to be the focal point. So starting with CIP meeting earlier and budget committee trainings, it's gonna be a better year.
Sorry, I'm looking at. Guys, any more questions?
I don't think so.
I'm good.
Good with that? Um, we have our policy review. So the things we had in front of me was the, uh, no smoking policy, tobacco policy.
This has been discussed. I believe you were in agreement to proceed with it. We just don't have a formal vote to proceed with it or to formalize the policy, so if you'd like to do that. Was, um.
Uh, one thing about this, though, that I, I mean, is the signage. You know, I mean, we're gonna put a policy, but we should have signage around that tells people about the policy. Says signs will be placed. I was just curious with that. So we're gonna have to.
That was part of the discussion, yes.
Okay. Do we have an idea how much that it's gonna cost? There you go. That's part of the conversation.
I, I can say that, uh, if, if we go with the Department of Corrections, um, that would be the cheapest route, and it's just a matter of having to drive to Concord to get them, or we also have New England Barricade that, um, can produce them as well. They are a little bit pricier, but it's convenient because it's a drive down the road. Um, but with, with no budget to really work with, I'm gonna push for New Hampshire Department of Corrections, that avenue. Um, I guess I would need to, we need to place them at all facilities, and do we want them to strictly say, you know, no smoking on town property per ordinance, um, smoke-free facility? That's what needs to be finalized.
Does there have to be anything specific, or can it just say no smoking?
It can just say no smoking.
I mean, I would just go, I would just go as generic as possible and.
Okay. We can do that.
But, I mean, if we can get them from Department of Corrections for cheap, I mean, we gotta get those little signs too, so.
What other signs?
The ones for the trail.
Trails.
Oh. Sorry, we're gonna arrest people.
So we will have it signed, if that's your question. Yes.
It's more of a public service of having the signs that say, this is a non-smoking facility, this is a non-smoking area. I mean, it's there to make the public aware, is what it is. I mean, so like, yeah, John, I don't know how much money we want to spend on this for, for.
Yeah, but eleven ninety-five times how many?
Well, again, I don't, I don't think anybody here is against the policy. Are there any objections about the policy?
No.
So again, I think the only thing we have to worry is, what I'm curious about is the cost factor of putting out the signs. And what that's gonna be. Is it three hundred dollars? Is it four hundred dollars? Do we need ten? Do we need fifteen? I mean.
We could probably start it. I mean, with the amount of facilities that we have, we could probably just start with posting one at each location at the entrance. So we've got highway recycling.
Point, we mentioned it, it's a policy. People know when they come in, but if people are smoking in an area we don't want, we may have to increase signage in some spots and.
Sure.
But instead of like overdoing it, we just kind of do it, and then you would hope most people know that you're not supposed to smoke next to a.
Are we gonna put it on every town building to start?
I could probably laminate the policy and attach it to some of the buildings. It's tacky, but.
Yes, okay. But, I mean, I want to go, I want to go inexpensive, trust me.
Put it on the bulletin board. You don't have to laminate it.
Yeah.
But I mean, this could, I mean, cause technically, I mean, posted on all the perils and.
All right. I mean, technically, yeah, it, it applies to everything that.
I'm happy with just doing the buildings personally.
Yeah.
Just through the roads, as soon as you come in, no smoking.
That's right. At the parking lot.
I know. Yeah, before the meetings and stuff like that.
And they typically tend to be heavy smokers.
Hey, it is what it is.
Yep.
Uh, so ready to make an approval on this? With the termination of the cost of the signs being reasonable? Well, again, I mean, like, we're gonna, we're just gonna use your eleven dollars right now for a thing, but let's just say, you know. And we will make public how much we're spending on the signs for the, at the next meeting when we have that full, before we actually go on expenditure, that we'll bring that up, just so people know what we're spending on it.
Sure.
To be transparent.
I'm gonna do that.
Okay. Uh, do we have a motion on that, or have we already made that?
Um, you're gonna, if you could to formally adopt it, and then what I'll do is I'll give you a formal version for you to sign that we can put in the policy and ordinance book.
Even when the policy is in fact.
Yeah, no, that's a good idea.
The big, it just says no smoking, no smoking indoor. I mean, it's really kind of the same thing. It's just part of the personnel policy. They're not supposed to be smoking in the police cruisers and the plow trucks.
It's on all town properties. Any town-owned or operated property.
Smoking or tobacco use prohibited on town-owned properties.
So prohibited in all town buildings, other enclosed spaces, town vehicles and equipment.
In addition.
And then the next one is in addition.
In addition, smoking and tobacco use are prohibited on all town properties, town-owned properties.
It includes e-cigarettes and vapes and all that stuff. Spit, chew, snuff, whatever.
We have not officially signed it.
Dips.
Or adopted. We're all good?
Yeah, I'm good. I'm good. Are you good?
I mean, you're, you just kept, you kept saying, John, I was just waiting for you to say, I'm done. Okay. Make a motion?
I'll make a motion that we adopt the no smoking tobacco policy.
Second.
Motion to second. All in favor, roll call.
Hi, Steve Welch.
Hi, John Decker.
Hi, John Moore.
Hi, Mr. Sherman.
And again, once we notice how much the signs cost, we will make that public so that people know how much we're spending on this. Uh, next.
You want to do the safety policy next?
Sure.
Safety policy, I believe the Joint Loss Safety Committee proposed this to the Board of Selectmen in two thousand twenty-two. Um, it was never acted on. I apologize for blank pages and upside down. Obviously, the photocopier was not being friendly, but either the person doing it or the machine, I'm not going to lay claim to either. Um, the town's safety policy. So this, uh, was given to me shortly after I started by the safety committee, um, to bring forward to you again for formal adoption. It had not been through Primex to review it for their recommendations. They have been through, um, said that it meets all of the Department of Labor, Labor standards for safety policy. Uh, the two things that our reviewing person did comment was that it would be helpful to include both, um, Lab six hundred, which is on safety programs and Joint Loss Management Committees, so people can understand why this policy is in place and what the committee's role is in it, as well as the RSA, um, two-eighty-one dash A, colon, sixty-four on safety provisions. So those were both included as appendices to the back of this policy. Other than that, the rest of it is um, as it would have been originally presented to you.
And these are handed out at the time of employment?
These will be handed out at the time of employment, and they will, will actually have to review it with all the employees to make sure that they understand accident injury reporting. Uh, there's a check sheet, a checklist that comes with this that the safety committee also developed that goes through like a new higher orientation.
So once it's approved, you know, tonight.
It gets distributed to everybody. They have to sign acknowledgement.
They acknowledge that this is it, okay.
Yes.
It's in here.
On one of the upside down and backwards pages.
It's the signature, yeah. No, actually, it was on the right side of the page.
It's on page seven.
It all read fine to me, but
I'm like, holy smokes.
It's pretty generic.
Right, right. And that was the problem I had with it, I think, that it was like just too generic and.
Well, I mean, a lot of it's common sense, refrain from fighting. Hey.
Yeah, I mean, do we need all this? I guess my question was, do we actually need all this in there?
Can never have too much.
Well, sure you can, because if nobody looks at it.
But it's also for legal protection too.
Right, yeah.
So I mean, you can't start making it, I mean, can't cut out sections. I don't, I don't know how you would actually like have, not have part of this. Like, I mean, if you worked anywhere, this is all pretty basic.
Right, ride as a passenger in a vehicle, only if it is equipped with a rider's seat.
Don't sit in the back of the pickup truck.
Yeah.
We could, we could, we could write it that way. Please don't sit in the back of a pickup truck. But if somebody did ride a vehicle in an inappropriate spot, and then they got into a car accident and that person gets paralyzed, we're like, you signed off that you acknowledged you weren't supposed to be sitting there. And then, whereas before you say, oh, you never told me I couldn't sit in the back of a truck unbuckled.
That's why I say you can't have enough.
Correct. It's basic, common sense stuff that you need to.
Yeah, I didn't see it.
Wherever that was.
Like the high visibility stuff, it, I mean, it's, and the incident stuff will be good for just what, what happened, and then we can see, is there something happening around here that we just? Like, these forms shouldn't take much to go over, but at least if they come into Ellen, she's gotta give it to Primex and be like, hey, are we tracking?
Right. Why wasn't this in the form?
The form is just like, what happened? Well, I think I heard himself.
That's why I don't. There's a whole investigation form in here too.
Right.
Yeah, the simple.
So appendix A and B, the blank sheets, those are reserved. Those are supposed to contain the emergency evacuation plan for the town municipal office and the library.
You have those?
Um, I have not been able to locate them on my computer. I have to find out where they are from the Joint Loss Safety Committee. I mean, we have evacuation plans posted in every room. It's just we should have one for the entire building, so I have to find that and incorporate that into the policy.
But do we want to wait till that gets in here before we approve it?
I don't think you have to. It's just reference too, and it just becomes part of the policy.
The other part of it's more important, getting it in the guy, like.
Right.
It's just identifying that there is an evacuation plan, and here's your reference in case you're in the building.
Which you wouldn't be looking at this. They'll be looking at the ball as if, if you're in this room, take a left.
Exactly.
Right.
Turn around.
The way you leave. Where it's located.
What's that?
All right. What you might want to add is, it says municipal center, but where? Located at the front door.
Well, that could change too.
Depends on the emergency, absolutely.
Well, I'm satisfied with the policy that we have, I mean, right here.
I thought it was fine.
So, wanna move forward with the policy?
It's, it's something.
Well, again, we're moving forward, and the positive way is to have stuff like this, which is good. So.
Make a motion to accept the, um, statement of safety policy for the town of Nottingham.
Yeah, technically, I see Town of Nottingham Employee Safety Manual. Read the next page.
Oh.
That's our statement.
It's upside down.
Yeah, read that.
Well, it depends. If you open them like this, you keep rolling, it rolls accidentally.
I'll make a motion to approve the Town of Nottingham Employee Safety Manual.
I'll second. We have a motion in a second. Roll call.
Hi, Steve Welch.
Hi, John Decker.
Hi, John Moore.
Hi, Mr. Sherman.
And for the personnel policy, I was able to provide comment back, but John and I did not meet to go over the comments, so if you want to.
So we need to do that.
So let's hold off on this.
So we should set a more firm date as opposed to a, we will meet before this other meeting.
Okay, well, you guys figure that out.
Yep. Yep.
The fee schedule?
No, I think there's a social media policy hiding in the back there.
Oh, no, that was just in response to John. John had a question if we had a um social media policy, which we do, so I think it should be enveloped into this policy.
Okay.
So that's why I just kind of put it in there for discussion purposes when you get to the point of adoption.
Next. So my question was on the fees, the building permit fees here. I read what Dale wrote. Would we have to have two more line items? Cause it says, we, seems like we plumbing residential plumbing, electrical, mechanical, we have the fee for the fifty dollars, right? And that's going to cover the solar fee for the electrical. But like he's mentioning here that we should have it for a rooftop or ground mount. I take the ground mounts, the big ones.
So yeah, that's what he's saying is that we're only charging an electrical permit fee regardless of what it is. So he's saying that it should be a separate fee. Because solar, it's solar panel installation, you know, it falls under electrical right now because where else would it fall? But should there technically be a separate application altogether?
So he's saying cross off solar.
Yeah, he's saying add for solar.
Right, but cross it off.
So, so a solar permit application would be seventy-five dollars for rooftop or a hundred dollars for our ground mount.
But he means cross it off from here.
Yes. Yes.
And we'd have to list.
No, and just make it seventy-five and a hundred. It doesn't matter if it's commercial or residential.
I think he's saying increase it a little bit because technically it's only getting an electrical uh review.
So add them.
If you, if it becomes seventy-five, basically fifty of it is for a residential.
Well, he's.
For solar, including the electrical portion and the building portion of it.
It says flat rate.
Yeah.
So I'm thinking from, again, sorry to ask the others, but I'm thinking that there should be another line item that says if you're going to put solar on your house, there's a hundred dollar fee for him to come to inspect the solar that's on your roof. And then if you have one of the big solar panels that are on the side of your yard or whatever like this, that that's going to be the seventy-five dollar fee for him to make sure that they were put structurally okay.
Yeah.
That's not the electrical portion of that's still going to fall into there, but it's a whole nother fee for anybody adding solar to their house.
Okay, that's what I was, that's what I was trying to understand. If it was separate or.
It's like swimming pool. There's a fifty dollar fee for swimming pool. You know, it's separate. This, these are going to be new line items added to the current uh fee schedule.
That's my understanding as well.
That's how I read.
That's how I read it.
Two additional lines, one for.
The residential and commercial to strike the solar out of it.
So with that being said, because these are fees and this was a discussion matter because we added as an agenda topic, this will also require a public hearing.
Yeah.
We'll have to develop the form that outlines the fees and how it's going to be charged and then have a public hearing before you adopt.
Right.
Yeah, but we're still on the same fees here anyways, that's still.
Right, so part of the so I, I kind of brought these questions up originally, which is why we asked Dale. Was that I'm looking at new residence construction. Construction cost is thirty cents per square feet. Residential construction renovation is forty cents per square feet. That doesn't make sense in my mind. Why would new residence construction be less than a renovation?
Well, you could do a lot more damage in the renovation. You could be cutting a carrier beam. It would cry probably a little bit more.
You could be taking by your outside wall, adding an addition on there. So you have to do all your electrical, you have to re undo.
I think the top one is for a full house, twenty-five hundred square feet. A renovation can be just for a.
So why wouldn't it at least be the same? I, I mean, to me, it, I would think they should be the same rate.
It is for commercial.
Right, for commercials the same rate. Why would it be different for residential?
Maybe because you're taking into consideration that the new construction for residential is also paying an impact fee.
Wait, but that shouldn't be part of this.
Well, it also hasn't been updated since two thousand eighteen either, so.
Yeah, I mean, to me, I.
Actually, I don't even know if this section was updated in two thousand eighteen. This is the first page of all of the town fees.
Should we have a joint meeting with Dale to go over these fees?
He says we charge for, right? He's saying we are lower than most towns, but we charge for everything, not just living space. But I don't see anything on here that we charge.
It's per square foot.
It's per square foot of the house. It's not just a living space. So you're not, you're charging per square foot of the basement. First floor, second floor.
That's what he's saying. Okay.
Yeah.
Cause we group it all in, cause everything is one. Okay, I got it.
But there probably should be something added. Didn't we go through when we were reviewing that other thing? The permit renewal. It says fee twenty-five dollars, but there was only supposed to be a one time.
Yes. So according, yes, according to the zoning ordinance, it says that it's a one time.
Cause that's not here and I feel like there are some things in town and they just kind of keep paying a fee and it's getting kicked down the road.
I think that was what started this as an agenda topic.
Thank you, Matt, cause that did remind me, because after we were talking to that, that commercial guy. Do we need to increase that the number of years that you can renew it? Because I mean, if things are actually taking three or four years to actually go through the process. I mean, it seems unreasonable to keep having to submit a whole brand new plan or every two years or whatever, whole new permit, when you're just, the process has started and you're continually working on it and it takes that long.
That would probably be something that'd have to be kicked into the zoning board.
Zoning ordinance change. That would be planning board.
What?
That would be a planning board change for the ballot.
Why is it not the zoning board?
Because the planning board creates the zoning ordinance. The zoning ordinance is the enforcement authority for it.
Okay. I don't know the pyramid quite well.
You will.
John's passing the gavel.
Yeah.
I was just pulling up the section on the building permit renewal.
Yeah, it wasn't one year renew.
Yeah, it was supposed to only be a one.
Right.
One time.
Right.
So it says. Work proposed shall commence within six months of the date of issuance and shall be completed within one year. Failure to commence construction in a timely fashion shall result in the expiration of said permit. One renewal prior to expiration is allowed per building permit. Extension of the one year period by special exception for health or financial reasons for owner occupied dwellings is permitted.
That's if you haven't started, right?
As if you've started, if owner occupied.
But I'm saying the wording on that is if you're constructing, it can take longer than a year.
Right, then you can get a renewal, but you have to have started it.
So do you want to meet with Dale first and then determine whether you need to put forward a recommendation for a change to the planning board?
Probably.
We're putting this one off, so why not uh meet with him first too?
Well, we have to. It has to be a public.
Yeah.
Right, we can discuss some things now, but.
Well, you have, you have to give something for the public to be able to review beforehand, your proposed changes. So we actually.
We need to meet with Dale first.
Is there a way to make this look better? This fee look like this fees or anything like that?
Yes, absolutely.
Try to like, I don't know if there's a better way that we need to this, cause it's a bunch of building stuff, but.
Do you want to bring this up for the planning board meeting next week? The fees?
Absolutely.
Uh, I think it wasn't necessarily the fees.
Yeah, it's not necessarily the fees. It's the.
It's the length of time.
For the zoning.
The fees.
And the fees were also a concern.
Those fees are ours, right?
Yes.
Not, but that length of time is planning board. So that's where things get confusing and cause.
John has questioned thirty and forty cents per square foot.
Right.
So it's page thirty-three of the zoning ordinance.
That to me seems weird, that it would be different or if anything, I would think that the new would be more than the. But I'm no expert.
I feel like that's a side, like if it is for the whole square footage, twenty, most houses are twenty-five, but if it is including the basement and everything else, then that, that fee would probably, maybe it was trying to make it manageable, but I agree, at the same time, if a developer's coming in to put up. He has to get it, you know, when they, when foul zone or somebody's building a whole new development, he gets a building permit for each house, right? First he gets a development.
Yeah, why are we giving a developer a break versus a regular homeowner who's been in town? You know? Try to put a new bedroom on his house.
Yeah, but that bedroom in the house, he might be only adding four hundred square feet, so it's four times forty cents.
Yeah, so what's the difference? Why, why are you going to charge him forty cents for an additional bedroom when you're charging a developer thirty cents for an additional bedroom on a new house?
Well, cause generally the, the new house is going to be, when you put everything all together, could be twenty-five hundred, three thousand square feet.
Seems like we're giving developers a break instead of our residents.
Well, it could be an individual home, somebody that's building their own new house, that just has a private contractor building it for them.
Yeah.
And so then why, I mean, it might not be under just a big general, you know, subdivisions. Could be to somebody that bought a two acre piece of purple and parcel it today and putting it in my house here.
It could be. So we're, we're encouraging, we're encouraging new development as opposed to renovation.
I don't know how you say encouraging. It's only.
That's, the, the way this pricing is, it encourages new development over somebody renovating and taking care of their house.
I don't, I don't, I don't follow you at all on that, but.
Well, maybe when Dale comes in, he can explain what is normal fees that he's seen to why.
Right, and why does he think it needs to be more?
But you know, the same with the commercial. I mean, it'd just be nice to have some references around us too, because if you're going to be building in a warehouse and you're looking like, oh, Dover's too expensive. Oh, here's Nottingham now and we want to encourage some commercial development, but maybe it's the same thing for a housing development. Like, it's too, too expensive to build in Dover. Let's go throw fifteen houses in Nottingham. I know.
I.
What?
I mean, does it think a demolition fee of fifty dollars is maybe too short or should that be more?
The demolition?
I don't even know what that's for.
I mean, again, if these haven't been, if these haven't been.
To demolish a house.
To demolish a whole house, fifty bucks.
I mean, this camp's in the lake, they're getting demolished, that is, fifty bucks.
Cool. And they turn around and then they build a brand new one for.
Right. So if you, and if you.
But then we're giving them a deal at thirty cents per square.
If you take it down in March.
Yeah, but then we're giving them a deal at thirty cents per square instead of forty.
Yeah, exactly.
Alright. So we're going to continue this discussion on this when we meet with Dale or have a pause.
Does that still count as new construction? If there was a, if we're working on the same foundation?
I get, no, it is not.
Right.
It's a Renault.
Right.
But what if they put a whole new foundation underneath and everything? And there's no.
Foundation comes out and there's no house there, then it isn't a construction. You leave one corner of the old house there, it's a Renault.
Yeah.
Saying that's, that's.
Yeah, I, yeah, it's like. I don't know. They should be the same to me.
Well, before we change anything, I think of meeting with Dale just to go over what these actually are.
I agree.
Uh, before we start playing with numbers on stuff that we're not a hundred percent.
I don't do it, John.
No, again, yeah, it's.
I agree, it was.
I mean, you want to say that it seems pretty, it's a new residence, and a new construction renovations, but I mean, now we can start asking a hundred questions on what is that?
Get out of that rabbit hole.
Yeah. Actually, going back to the other fees, what defines a major or minor subdivision?
The amount of lots.
Amount of lots. Is, is that just in somewhere in the?
Having the zoning ordinance?
It's in the zoning sort.
For the subdivision regulations.
There you go. No, it's the amount of lots.
For a major or minor subdivision?
Our major and minor subdivision. I want to say it's three and then anything over three is a major. Pretty sure that's. I never have in front of me, but that's.
Right, don't quote you.
Yeah, I'm pretty sure that's how it works. Most times the minor subdivisions, what they've come in front of the board is somebody owns ten acres of land and their kid wants a piece, so they cut off three acres for him or whatever and that's a minor, cause you're doing a subdivision, cause you're making two lots out of one. So that's ninety percent of the time what we see. Alright. And we're going to talk about the personnel policy later after you guys meet.
Yes.
Okay, alright, moving along here. Uh, action items.
Personnel policy.
And building permit fees.
Yeah.
We'll make those noted at the bottom of the agenda for next meeting. Thank you. And look at that, eight o'clock. We will be going to a non-public, but before we go into a non-public session, this is when uh we welcome public comment. So if anybody here wants to say anything to the board of selectmen, please come right on up, state your name and your address.
Good evening. My name is Fred Howe. I live on Shore Drive, sort of near the end of it, on the lake. And um, so I'm driving on Route one fifty-six a few days ago and I see the person at the gravel pits snowmobile races changing the date for August twenty-four and twenty-five for the next race, which I wasn't aware was going to be happening. So I'm sort of ignorant about this particular subject and I apologize, cause I really didn't have the time when I became aware of it to research it. So feel free to fill me in on what you know about that. So my concern is it's just so noisy. I think I live at least a mile away as the crow flies. And the first time I heard these uh snowmobiles, it just sounded like a motorcycle race right over the crest of the hill from my house. So I walked over there and no motorcycles. So I continued walking and walking and walking until I got to one fifty-six and then the gravel pit's still farther down the road. I guess to cut to the chase, since we have to have at least one of these races a season and maybe more, um I think we need to do something about the noise. I mean, does the town have some noise ordinance?
So this discussion uh has been going on for a while, cause these races have been going on for five years now?
I think.
Probably.
Alright, yeah, I was going to say at least three.
Three years, yeah. And I think that was away last summer when it happened.
So we permitted them to have three, three weekends. One is in, I think, this is June, then we just had, the other one was just like two weeks ago.
Yeah.
Last one they had and the other one in August.
June, July, August is what it was. I don't, I don't remember the three days.
There's only been one that I know of this summer so far.
Yeah, but the next meeting, yeah.
Yeah, they had to shift it around.
There's three that are permitted. Yeah, they can be loud. Absolutely. I live on White's Grove, not too far.
You can hear it?
Of course I can.
Yeah, I mean, I can hear it at my house sometimes too.
I imagine.
Not, not always, but.
I hear Lee Raceway too. It's annoying, but. By the living.
I, I, we're, I can hear, I've heard Lee Raceway and, and I guess it's quite a lot farther away from us. But um I mean, what about mufflers on these things? Do we have a noise ordinance in this town?
We do not.
No.
Nope.
Because you technically then, so just so you know, and again, I'm not trying to be controversial, but if, if we did have a. be controversial, but if, if we did have an ordinance for the noise there, you know, if, if you enjoy watching fireworks on the lake on Fourth of July, we'd have to stop those, too.
Okay.
You can play this, you can, you can play, I mean, it's one of those catch, I mean, they do donate at the end of the, I mean, I've been to it, I went to the one last, uh, to check it out, just as more of a spectator, to make sure that we had our officer on duty, the ambulance is over there, it's kind of doing more of just a, I was only there for like an hour or two, it wasn't like I was spending all day. But just to do a check for the town.
Yeah.
You know, as to, you know, what's going on, who's there, how it's being run.
It's interesting.
Facilities, you know, are they being managed right, as people, and it, it was a nice well operation, but it is loud. But we did put the things on there that, you know, after six o'clock at night, they cannot be running, they cannot start running until ten o'clock. So we've tried to restrict the.
Hours of operation.
Right. Uh, which I think has benefited some people, but, you know, since we don't have an ordinance on it, I mean, I don't know, I mean.
You know, I toss out, it isn't just us who live in the town, but, you know, imagine campers who made their reservation, you know, at their first opportunity, and they come and, and the weekend is like this, they're here for this weekend, and they hear that all weekend.
It, it is posted, they did come in, they submitted three separate fees, there was a public discussion at that point. I believe it is the end of August and September, like Mr. Soref said, for the, the two remaining races.
Correct, it's August twenty-fourth and twenty-fifth, with practice on August twenty-third, and then September twenty-first and twenty-second, with a practice round on September twentieth for the next two events.
And then when they were posting it, it was kind of a regional thing, too. I mean, it's kind of like the Lee Speedway. I don't, now, we don't have any say what Lee does, but I mean, it's the same thing, they race on Friday nights. I mean, it's just kind of a, I think I heard it for about three hours before I realized what it actually was. I was like, oh, somebody must be doing something on Lee. I'm like, no, the, the direction's different. And I live over on MacRillis, so I live down 152, you can still hear it.
With Lee, uh, it depends on which way the wind is blowing.
Right.
Right. I just don't know much what there is to do or how we can technically prevent them from doing what they're requesting to do, because they've met everything that was put in place for them to do.
The others. With or without a permit, they could run them every day of the week.
If it was their own personal, so.
Right.
They just wanted to.
Fight their friends over and.
Yeah, but it isn't that. It isn't that.
No, so, they've been really respectful, because when they first, before they even started their, the, the competitions, you know, people were going over there and on whenever they felt like it, were just riding around on the pond. You know, I mean, they now at least have an organized event, but you could just be sitting there on a Tuesday night, and people could have been over there just blasting their, I mean, and there's no ordinance for, for noise, so you kind of just, you couldn't do anything. But now, because of the discussions we've had with the owners of the property in this year, those are all gone away. So there's no snowmobiles that are running across it on a Tuesday like tonight or tomorrow. They know that to keep in the good graces of the town, that we're going to, you can do your three organized events, but don't have people there every weekend running around and playing on it, and, you know, if that happens, then there's a chance you might not get your permit from the town. So we were trying to work with the applicant in order to, you know, meet both, both ends.
So they do have to apply for a permit?
Every year.
Yeah.
And we broke it out into three separate permits, because there is three separate events this year.
That seems reasonable.
Just that way, in case there's any stipulations that needed to change or anything, it would be on three permits.
Yeah, that seems reasonable. Well, it's just awfully loud. Again, I feel like your argument about the fireworks is, it's a point, but I think the campers probably enjoy the fireworks, um, and to listen again.
Yeah, they ain't paying it for tax dollars either, so.
They're what?
Nothing, never mind. Sorry.
Strike that from the minute.
I'd really like to know if the town could, um, could look into them using mufflers, having mufflers reduce that noise a little bit.
Believe most of the, they have a muffler, but it is usually designed to be louder for higher performance.
Sure, I understand that.
Uh, if you were to go to the Deerfield Grass Drags, it'd be a very similar event, just on grass instead of water. Um, but I, I don't know if they could get the same performance, or if they'd even be as safe. They kind of need the amount of horsepower so they don't fall into the water.
Same way with lumberjack competitions with the chainsaws, they gotta be modified and have loud exhaust and.
Or the Lee Speedway, or the New England Dragway, or.
Right. With the maximum performance, it's, it's loud.
But next year, we will have another public comment before we go, we sign off on these, so that'd be the best time to, for you to really address it with them, because right now, it's, it's set for the year, and that's, that's the way it's going to be. But next year, it'll be posted, you know, that we're only having a discussion with them to sign off, or we'll be having a discussion to sign off on the permitting, and that'd be the time to come up and express any concerns.
Normally, they put the application in March. I think that was when I had received it initially this year, and then I circulated it off to the various departments, whether it's the fire department, the police chief, the health officer, and they put their requirements on for the year based on past experience, and that all takes place before it comes to the Board of Selectmen for final approval.
Okay.
I would say probably between March and April.
I'll, I'll, I'll ask you about it.
Okay, sounds good.
Yeah, please email Ellen, she'll know when it comes in.
Yeah.
Thanks for coming in. Good to see you.
Does anybody else have questions?
What?
Oh, no, I'm, I'm waiting for you. No, please come on up. I knew you were coming up anyway, so I was just.
And L.
Not rushing you.
Robin Marshall, 189, I'm from Becker. Been spending time at the town beach, it's been lovely that it's something. And I may have mentioned this before, but just noticing things around, that the only sign there so far at the beach is on the side of the shed, unless you go to the porta potty, you're not going to see it. So nobody's paying attention to any rules on the beach because they're not visible. I don't know when the new signs are supposed to come.
That was the new sign, the one that was installed on the side of the shed?
Well.
And I, I mean, there's the two, there's the one at the gate that pretty much.
There's two more on the road in the way.
Yeah. But I, it doesn't go through all of the beach rules.
Oh.
So it'd probably be better suited if it was.
Maybe at the walking path.
Yeah, because you can't really see it from the beach.
Well, what about like at the, where the, before the parking lot or something?
At the footpath. Yeah, the footpath.
There's two separate footpaths, so.
I'm trying to.
If you put it on the front of the shed, there's doors, at least people would see a sign, but you can't even see the sign unless you go that way.
Yeah, but, right, you would walk by that and go to the beach, you're not going to look at this.
Not if you go this way. If you go this way, you'll walk by it, but not this way, which most people go this way, it's just a little bit longer. You just got no shortcut.
So you're going to skip it.
Which way is that? Is that the one with the rope going across?
Yeah, it just, there's no parking.
Yeah, like you used to be able to drive your car before with the rope there, you could actually go closer into, right.
That's where I go.
Drive down there.
And then I kind of looked around at other beaches, so Tamworth, um, I go to Chikora Lake a lot if I was going up north, and they do have a separate residence beach, and then they have a public beach. And they do have, it's just a simple sign, it just says, um, Tamworth Beach, residents only. So I, the problem with people coming from the lake, again, they're not reading any of the signs along the road at all, because they're accessing it from the lake.
Right.
So they don't know about any of the water, paddle boats, or any kayaks. So if we just had a simple sign of Nottingham Beach, residents only, I think it would deter people coming, because they have no idea, it's a, they just see a little open beach, and they're like, oh, cool.
Yep, I think that's a good point, Robin.
And they also charge fifty dollars fine for a non-resident. So you would earn a hundred dollars for those people stuck there with the gate closed. So they charge fifty dollars for a fine.
For non-residents?
For non-residents, just saying. Um, I don't know how you get that incorporated, but that's a way where town people, you could earn money, but it's not on the town people by charging non-residents a fine if they're caught in there.
We should add some fines to our structure.
Yeah, why not? The police have to do it, they might as well get fined, you know? Yeah, just a thought.
I mean, there's a lot of ones to play off that. I was just thinking, like, if, if you're in an area and they close the gate, you have to basically like pay to get out of the gate.
Yeah, exactly.
Or you're there till the next morning.
Right.
And you're trespassing.
Right.
So here's your ticket and whatever, but.
Steve, don't be proud of that.
I've tried to tell people, make sure you're out by quarter, or at least packing up because of gate locks. So I'm trying to tell people, well, I'm at the beach, um, just so they don't get locked in. Um, and then I, I know that the state park is closed because of the fecal matter, but is anyone testing the town beach? I know it hasn't been open long, so I haven't seen any ducks.
No, Courtney actually sent an email on that last week because Selectmen DeBrio had questioned it. When we were doing swim lessons down there, it was a requirement, but, um, I don't think it's been tested since around the period of COVID during the pandemic. And the last time that there was actually a beach closure, people still chose to ignore the beach closure and continue to do it, so.
Was it even safe to be swimming? And it's so far away from the state park, and it hasn't, it's only been open two weeks, so the chance of there being any contamination there, but it was very warm, it was like bathwater.
The whole lake, doesn't matter where you are, it's all like that.
It's very warm. Uh, and it's a, like, who, who does the testing?
Um, it would be up to the Parks and Rec Department, because they oversee that as one of the facilities. I was just looking for Courtney's email real quick, because she explained.
The town beach, it probably should be tested periodically, I thought. And then if it, it should be closed, can we just get a NICSIL report saying, hey, the beach is closed due to contamination or whatever?
What the state do is they didn't close the beach, they just warn people, it's a risk, they didn't actually close the beach.
Which is what our swimming is anyway.
Yeah.
We keep a sign there.
So it's like, just like, don't drink the water.
Don't drink the water.
But I have my grandkids there, and I'm like, the mangoes going in the water, and I'm like, don't eat that.
I, I checked. I checked one night, just kind of to see if there were any shenanigans going on. There was four people there. No shenanigans.
I haven't seen anybody in a, whatever.
At what time?
They come in waves, so it's kind of.
Around five, five-thirty.
Yeah, by Saturday at ten-thirty, there was nobody there, but.
It was, I think it might have been during the week, too. So.
Okay. And, you know, the policing, the things with the fines, that's something we'd have to see, and we have to clear, um, go through Vaughn on that.
I just think it's a good idea.
Yeah.
Yeah, it'd be something they'd have to enforce.
You know, we can't help the non-residents, but if we find them, it might be a good deterrent for them. Um, and then the, the shenanigans after hours could result in the beach being closed, and I don't, I don't think that's right, because like, if it's off-season, the town can't be responsible for that property for people breaking the law, can they? I don't know. I just think that's really weird that there.
Here's a question for you. So you said this, and again, I don't want to get too far in this conversation, because we could have it going on for hours, but let's say if the town resident walking on that road, that's just being disrespectful and saying, I don't care if it's closed, then it, it should be, I mean, they're jeopardizing the town. It's not like somebody that says, hey, I'm from over here and I'm just exploring.
Should be that person responsible.
But how do you close, you're going to close off that one person?
Fine them, we got to do this fine. Fine them for, I think that's the way to go. I think people, when it comes to money.
I believe the way it is, that individual people can be basically given, they're, they're not allowed access, right? They, they would be considered a trespasser, so they.
They're prosecuted, they're arrested, they have a court date.
And they're not allowed to cross.
I don't think you can hold the town beach being open or closed based off unlawful people. So that was just my thought.
The words or intent in there is just, it's kind of an escalation, right? But if, if, if it continues, and we try to do something, and people, it continues, and we try to do something, it gets to the point where the landowner says, your actions aren't enough, and, and maybe it would have to be closed. It's not one person messes up and we lock the gate and we're closed again.
But that's not a, that's, it's not, if the access road isn't available to get to the town beach, it's not going to stop the shenanigans, they're still walking. Because it's winter, a lot of these shenanigans, they're not swimming, so I don't know. It just sat in easy with me. And then I thought, there's only two picnic tables, so I thought, if anyone calls for like a school project, it may be next year, like they're trying to do an end-of-the-year school project, I know Co-Brown, they have to do them, that's how some of these little libraries get built, but it might be a, a thing to, maybe they could build a picnic table or two, just brought it out there.
Eagle project.
Yeah, like a school project. If anyone, I don't know if people call the town and say, hey, we're looking to do a school project.
Um, normally if it's a student participating in one of those projects at school, we had a shed proposal that came through from Dover High that I think we're, we're taking advantage of. There's going to be a shed over at Marston.
And if the picnic table's out of there, we donate it.
No, no, one thing, the school projects, the Eagle School projects, uh, they've got some good stuff every time.
There's a bunch of them.
They do get used. So the first thing that people tend to go is, is the families get the table. So where there's one, two, just, that was, I'm just trying to brainstorm out my.
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
I was able to come across Courtney's email that she just sent. Um, she said they used to, they tested the beach once a month, but only because they were bringing, um, the rec camps down there, rec camp kids down there. Um, they used to be part of the state water testing program, but they took the town off the list, so we can't use DES signs on our property because of it. Um, we had, so this is her email, so it says, we had the test results in office if anyone called to ask, but they were very delayed. Um, she had to go to the beach, this is Courtney, get the water and drive it to Concord for the testing. Um, they said that they tried to close the beach down like six years ago due to cyanobacteria. They got a lot of nasty complaints that they didn't have the right to do so. So they haven't shut it down since, but just posted alerts to the town's website when the water conditions weren't what they should be. But, but it is not being tested regularly now.
So the cyanobacteria, you can usually see?
Mm-hmm, yeah, it's, it's like that blue-green color.
So if it looks like.
And if you see it, you don't want to swim near it, you don't want to let your pets near it.
Yeah, especially you don't want your pets to drink it.
So is it like floating on the water?
It's like, sort of like.
It's an algae bloom.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
It's like, even underwater, some.
You'll see it.